Everyone, I'd like to open a nice special meeting. In a special time, all changes to TOD. Like, start. Using foreseeable notes about this meeting. First of all, I'd like to, I want to ensure everyone that's here in the room has signed up. There was a sign up sheet when you walked in. So we'd like to speak, please write your name down on that sheet. And we've done, we've started doing this and it worked out very well. That being said, I'd like to ask you, I'm going to take your comments to around three minutes or so. I'm not going to have a stopwatch up here, but let's try to be respectful of everyone's time. I am going to try to get this meeting done around nine o'clock tonight. As the commission have not got out here before 10:30 with our last four meetings. This meeting will be continued. So don't think that if we don't get a chance to say something tonight, they won't. But I think if everyone's trying to charge his time, you shouldn't have any issues. That being said, Jeremy, you had something for us, one over?
Yeah, good evening, Mr. President, if you want.
Skip the commissioner instructions, let me do that quick. Start that on the table. Mike's last thing, Mike's chairman, Paul Shandley, chairman. Excellent, thank you. And staff, Mr. Speaker?
David Collin, I'm the coordinator.
Amanda Marquina is reporting secretary.
And Jeremy DeCarle.
Excellent, sorry about that, everyone. I'm sorry, and then Jeremy, you had something over with us, was brought to our attention about the notice?
About the.
And the rest of the commissioners?
Which, which?
About the survey, Matt?
Ah, yes, okay, yes, I tried to catch up, I'm getting. I was made aware that regulations require that zone change be submitted, or zone change requests rather, be submitted with a map that is signed by a local or a licensed land surveyor. And that is not the case here because I think it's impractical and very unlikely that we're going to get a land surveyor to sign off on a zoning map that is roughly a half a mile, three quarter mile, quarter mile radius piece of property and a property and a property rather. And I suspect that this probably been overlooked in the past. So, that being said, I think what we're going to do is we're going to explore our options here in the immediate future. But there's a real possibility that we can withdraw this application. And then move forward with your text that would allow the commission to do these wholesale large zone changes without needing a map prepared by a licensed land surveyor. That being said, tonight is not a waste of time. We want to hear the public comment. And depending on which way we go, we will take this comment that we received tonight and all of the information pulled on to it and submit it as part of a record of a future application if we need to withdraw and resubmit it.
Excellent, thank you, Jeremy. Does someone in the back want to grab me that list? Mr. Olson here, Peter Olson? You might grab it, because I think you're first on the list. Over it up to the public. No, it's okay. If anyone wants to add their name at the end, I'll make one last call. I certainly heard you say this before, but it's required that there be a legal notice in the public hearing of the record.
Wait a minute. Sorry, I sounded. Excuse me. To September 7, 2025, and September 12, 2025. Publicly announced, the Bethel Planning and Zellie Commission will hold a special public hearing on September 16, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the ECU room at Town Hall, One School Street, Bethel, Connecticut, to spell the following. Division to the Transit Oriented Development, TOD overlay town boundary, proposed by the Bethel Planning and Zellie Commission. At this meeting, a map entitled "Proposed TOD Revisions," dated 16/17/2016, shown in the current, and exposed TOD overlay boundaries to be preserved and testimony will be heard. For the course of the hearing, the commission may have been in the proposed TOD boundary to enlarge the proposed TOD area on use, the newly proposed TOD area based on testimony. However, in no case will properties not currently included in the existing TOD area blackout line on the first map, or the newly proposed areas red outlined and red shaded on the first map, be entered to propose TOD overlaying zone. Interested parties should refer to the map file with application which is available for reviewing in the Town Hall's office or the Zellie's office, both of which are located at Town Hall, One School Street, Bethel, Connecticut, or the Bethel and Zellie Hall website. At this meeting, interested parties may be heard and communication may be submitted in advance from the meeting via mail to the land use branch that falls about 16 miles from regular mail. This meeting will be held in person and virtually via, who will be linked to the access. A link to access to meeting virtually will be available on the agenda. Paul Shandley, chairman.
Good evening, my name is Peter Olson, I reside at 94 Testament Street, here in Bethel. Been resident since 1907. Home owner since 2001. And I've been a business owner of the town since 2006. I filed a protest petition against the proposed zone map amendment. This is not like the normal petitions that you see that are signed online or people submit signatures. This one has an legal effect. It will sign by the owners, but at least 20% of the land that is the subject of the proposed zone change. Back to the sign, we owe 30% of those landowners. The result requires a two-thirds majority vote of the entire board in order for the proposed amendment to pass. That's five for the pass. Only a couple of you were on this board when we went through the process of proposing and adopting the transit-oriented development district. Those who don't know, transit-oriented development has a definition as essentially being within 15 to 20 minutes walking distance of a transit station, train or bus. That's more or less one mile. This was the result of many months of work. We had public meetings that were interactive in this very room. The tables spread out, maps, magic markers, people sat around and talked. People in this town decided that this is what we wanted. It's important to remember that at the time we were doing this study, we had a downtown experience of many difficulties. Pressure from the walls, from big box stores, from online retailers. Some of those have grown, and some of them have gone a bit of a waste. There will have been that. We had empty storefronts and restaurants in our downtown. One of the biggest concerns that we heard was about the lack of viability for this downtown without people. Ten years later, only a fraction of the vision of TOD has been realized. Number of total residential units that has been built is nowhere near what we expected. But the downtown Bethel has changed. We see the positive benefits from bringing these people into downtown. We see it in our occupied retail spaces. We see it in our bounty of diverse and popular restaurants, bars. And we need an added commercial space in the downtown, which is not something a lot of voices can say. My opinion, the vibrant success of downtown that you see today is a direct result of the adoption of the Bethel Forward Plan of that institution in 2016. So please, let this planning continue to get its work. Don't obstruct that progress. Let Bethel continue to thrive and grow. An action to approve this proposed amendment will throw the brakes up, will send us spiraling back to what I consider to be more of an economic. Since I'm a lawyer, I have to point out many ways why I think this action would also be a bad policy. Illegal as a matter of law. And when we start with something, it didn't write down here, but this map is not correct. It does not reflect the map that is the proposed zone change that was filed in September 25. Map that's hanging on the wall outside is also incorrect. It does not show all the properties that are on the list of properties to be moved and the list of the map that it was filed. So it reflects what I think is the rush and the sloppiness to proceed to this hearing tonight without doing things, as my first item I will discuss, like following the regulations towards required. So that's number one. You expect me to follow the rules when I appear in front of you. And we file the materials that your regulations ask applicants to file in order for you to conduct full thorough fair reviews of applications. So in return, I expect you to do so. Here, you have the office. The map that was filed in the Town Hall's office, which I have attached to the materials that I distributed to you. By stat, you're required to file the proposed boundary change with the Town Hall in these 10 days before the hearing. You got the time right, and it was filed on September 2nd as the timestamp of the notice. However, that map itself is partially deficient. The fails to provide any person notice of the proposed change is only reflecting their property if they're in. Case law states this failure is not something that's weightable. So failure to mail a notice to somebody, if you show up at the hearing, that's something that can be waived because we can't notice. This is something that is not weightable. I have taken appeals and successfully gotten the city of Dambler into this area to admit that they should have done it correctly and made it through the action. The actions are forthright, if you don't agree. Second, you didn't comply with your own regulations as to what's actually required on that map. Survey, there is only one part of it, and I found a list of the exact requirements from your appendix, two years old regulations, which are attached, but it's in the state guide. I think you should expect to see the mentions of each of the lines there. You should expect to see the names of the property owners who are affected. You should expect to see the acreage of each of the persons involved. I'd like to see the street names, no street names. So there's a lot of information that, well, in an area this big, you wouldn't expect to have an A2 survey, which is what I usually give you when you travel. Something that has a lot more information than is required. So I think you should review your regulation and your appendix to see what's required on that map. And I would point out that the regulations, section C, section C specifically refers to commission initiated. So you're still subject. 2016 Bethel Forward Plan is a part of the 2020 Plan of Conservation Development. Statutes require that when we make a zone map amendment, you have to state how that map amendment complies with your Plan of Conservation Development. And you can't say that. Because Bethel Forward, 2016 TOD Plan is integral part of your 2020 Plan of Conservation Development. That has not changed. Any action you take can directly contradict your plan. Further say that you have to determine that the action is in compliance with Plan of Conservation Development. And again, you can't make that determination. So I question why the commission is undertaking this effort. It will not stop developing. Any developer who's presented without any alternative needs to go and develop their property. We'll just forget a little bit of formal housing, as you know. So if you may think you have enough points to get a moratorium, that would be great. We've talked moratorium all the last four years. Very short time period. But what you're supposed to do when you have a moratorium in place is work to get another moratorium in four years. Within that four years, you're supposed to go out and try to get enough development so you learn more points to get another. And if you take this action tonight, take this action to eliminate half the TOD, you are taking away the single greatest tool in your arsenal to encourage that developer to earn those points, to spin it into another word for it. This is how the laws of this nation. Further, the governor may have vetoed House Bill 5029, which I think everybody was afraid of what was going to be towns, but I think we all know that something's coming to the public stage through your special session or in the next legislative session. By eliminating 130 neighbors from the TOD transaction, multiply that by 20 units and you're talking about 2,600 potential housing units. By calculations of House Bill 5029, where that Bethel was going to need to provide 5,000 houses. So half of what would have been required to provide it will be wiped out with this. Why would you do that? I think you should. My opinion is proposals going in the wrong direction. And you should vote no. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Peter. Rosemary Pacquero, did I say that correctly?
Yes. My name is Rosemary Pacquero, I reside at AB88 East Detroit. Our Bethel community does not need, shouldn't have a TOD zone. We are a residential community whose major priority or quality of life when builders, developers come in, they are concerned with making money. I just ask that in all decisions you make, take your priority always be the quality of life of our residents for how to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Billy Michael. Bill Michael, seven and a half, Cleveland Avenue. I've been involved in this a long time. When it was initially brought about in 2016, where there was a book that was given out that preceded the meeting of the residents on Diamond Avenue. Everybody at Diamond Avenue went to this meeting and they're listening, they're talking, right? And nobody's answering any questions. They had no idea it was coming with this proposal. And the ironic thing is, when anybody that reads governmental pieces and they can see proof in the handprint of the academia, they're talking about new people, new people for Bethel, new transit oriented people, these are people. This is in the, this was in the library. People that walk, people that ride bicycles, people that use smart buses. This is like factory, folks going to move into this town and use that. This was all of people wanting the environmental Americans to be. And then it goes on and on and on. And at the very end, the last table really shows you the benefits. It showed the difference in the grand list without the TOD. So the government, the grand list is what goes, the revenue to the government of Bethel, that's the ultimate goal, that's the beneficiary. People that are so sick of sitting in traffic, show doubt, people everywhere. I'm pro property rights, I'm pro business, I'm not anti everything that has something to do with building, pro building and having people move in. But this, this has the complete step of government on it, the set size, the carve outs, all the language. So I was delighted, every aspect, every chance I had to speak against this, I did. And that big grand plan from 2016. I don't recall that big plan for Bethel ever being submitted to the citizenry of Bethel for a vote. This was all done on the grand planners with no back pressure from the people that were going to live with this. So I'm all in back, I support limiting the damage that this footprint will do. And I celebrate this commission for voting yes, thinking that that was sight of the track away from it. Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia and Parker, Gavin? Cynthia here? Oh, she's online? She online?
She's right on, she's right on the phone.
We'll come back to her. Alex Hutchinson? I'm sorry.
Come on up, Alex. First, I'd like to thank you all because I know what kind of work it takes for you to consider, we give a trial position. I personally am in support of the original plan. And one of the things I just wanted to bring up briefly, and I'm not going to read through the pages, so don't worry about it. I barely promised. But I know a number of people in this room were part of 2016 Bethel Forward, you know, groups that we got together, we talked about, really some lot of input and resulted in the plan of development. The original plan of development was designed to develop along the railroad tracks and along the transportation. And those are industrial companies, I'm assuming where the buses are and things like that. But I think our vision really was to connect the residential and/or the commercial, the commercial with residential above it, from the downtown to the train station service line contiguous, more or less downtown. And that has not been realized for whatever reason. So it's been nine years, but I just want to read a few sentences from the responses so that we can kind of remind ourselves what the original goals were. One of the concerns was businesses have shifted from selling goods to services, diminishing the downtown draw. It's continued over the last few years. There's less and less retail as a focus, more real estate offices, pizza lane, sorry. You know, a lot of different businesses that may not necessarily be retail. We can eat up those businesses. And one of the things that we talked about that was most important to us is the connectivity between downtown and the railroad station. And the most important thing was unless pedestrian connections are established, development west of the tracks could not, will not be transit oriented. And the town should push for establishing pedestrian crossings in the most cost effective, efficient way. And I'm assuming that this comes from not being able to build that bridge until. Because it is horrifyingly expensive. So my assumption is that's where it came from, it may or may not be right. But I can understand where your thinking came from, I still think larger plan makes still more sense. That makes sense to you. The other thing that was raised for sewer capacity is allotted to individual properties and acts as a development cap. And we have not realized that. I mean, whether it became law or whether it was intention, the capacity of the sewers and infrastructure in general has not been used as a cap for excessive developments, and that's a concern that I have. And. There. One of the other comments is there's concerns about the current physical conditions of sidewalks and putting lighting bottles, limited wheelchair accessibility or signage and spotting ADA complaints. Some of that has been addressed, but if you look at the upper house of the sidewalk in front of it, all the way up to jacklaws where it does a lot of this, we really need to address that to make our downtown attractive, if nothing else. And I have obviously a vested interest in that, and I will openly talk to it. But one of the issues that I would like to bring up, and I just bring this bill every time I get a chance, is parking, one of the things that the plan has said is parking supply in downtown gets limited. But I have suggestions. Suggestions I have is when you have a commercial with residential above it, that makes sense for shared parking. But I also think that there's a problem with, and please excuse me, these four buildings out here, because the overflow parking, used parking with five months out of the year, they can't park there. So the overflow parking for those four buildings was School Street. And you cannot park on School Street from November through April at night. The building where I have my bookstore, you have six apartments just in that one building that burned. There are two people in each apartment except for. There's two people in each apartment with cars. There's one space provided, but then they park in the broken symmetry lot overnight, which they're not allowed to do. And then there's no place for a guest to park, which, you know, that happens. But during the snow period, that lot gets piled all night. So I would encourage you to take a look at the transit oriented development, allow the parking where you can. But know that there are people that leave here and tell every resident in town and every employee and everyone else that overnight parking is in places where they can't park. So I know in my building, you know, there's going to be two people in a two bedroom apartment. Most likely, I have three people in a one in a one bedroom apartment next door to me. So that's going to be the reality when you start talking affordable, people are going to move in together, more cars in the downtown, partially because there isn't that, that line of applications that came in between downtown and train station where they could walk here. The other thing is it's going to be transit oriented, let's add other transit buses. And, you know, that kind of thing, let's plan for those things so that we do increase the value of getting around in town. And I just want to thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. Mike Boyle?
Good evening, my name is Mike Boyle. I live at 19 Kingswood Drive, you're down. I've been here 40 years, raised my family. I have my company, Based Technologies, in Park Park. And I chaired up until this year, EDC, for the last 15 years. So our commission, through the course of time, when we began this in 2016, was very, very much involved. I've never seen an effort for as many people to express themselves in terms of a desire for change. And Bethel Ford was the appropriate name because we made a lot of movement, a lot of waves that had benefited this town. Some you've seen, or you may question what you've seen, without realizing the work that went in behind the scenes. And I'm going beyond TOD. But just like every other thing that we brought into this town with the help of B and Z, most of you are, sorry, are new members and not that familiar. But anyway. TOD is, the state is behind it. The governor has made many comments. The various agencies of private and public enterprise are putting money in. I looked at some numbers, which I'm sure may have been used or not. But since 2022, approximately 400 million dollars has been allocated for TOD work. And there's a lot of vacancies in state money that is for TOD to allow things that we otherwise would not be eligible to get. So part of me is like, we have this Bethel Ford strategy, and I think there's some fear and panic because maybe there's potential for overdevelopment in terms of our town with the amount of housing that's needed and, and the say 3D thing is just killing us, I get it, all right? But at the same time, we have to manage within the confines that we have. No one has actually given me a good reason why we should even try to cut back this map, which is not what Jim is like us. But bottom line is, we need to think more on Bethel Ford and how to improve what we've got to work with and kind of rebuild on it. We don't, do not, any drives, after putting all our time and your time. What I'm going to say, we need to Bethel back. Why would we want to go back? Okay, but we worked so hard to go. And yeah, there is a fear in terms of housing. And yeah, there is a fear in terms of housing, C thirty Gs, all the development going on. But we're looking in the wrong corner. If you think it's all TOD that's causing the problems, it's not. And so TOD and Bethel Forward is a long-term strategy. It is not something that's going to be, uh, executed, implemented overnight. And look, our town is much more on the map now than it was ten years ago. And I compliment P and Z and, and the people that were part of this spell, along with EDC, along with our town administration to make the town what it is. So I am asking for consideration to please do not change what we have with TOD. And let's figure out together how we can make this better. Bethel Forward, please not Bethel backwards. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy Pramo?
I'm trying to go here. Twenty ninety way drive. I live in this town thirty years. I was at that feet, so I get the cramps. Wanted sidewalks. All those trains that just stopped. And I totally have a transition for the street, but I believe it should be Durant Avenue. The train station where today is the plane, and that's it. You cannot walk twenty minutes from a station with a bag. I'm running the sidewalks going the other way from left and Durant Avenue. It should be five blocks up there. And then you're going to have buildings in town, business systems, which are, you know, somebody buys like buys a building. I'm going to, I'm going to put an apartment building in the transportation. Okay, they take down a builder or two, now they got the property, which like another eighteen year building up. And we have more markets. It's pushing, but nothing but more traffic. Rides are separate, backyards are torn down, and apartment buildings for put off. It's, it's got to stop. It must be in, you know, it's nice to have apartments, but they, they should be in the area where the transit hits. It should be on the way, you have the train station that goes to North Walk and down that way to New York. It should be, you know, where the bus from North Walk. Not all the way over here, not all the way down on the other side, down on fifty-three, fifty. The light middle town, the train stations that put the train system, this should be not spread out all over the town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have Eric Michael.
Today is signing this Gary Michael. I reside at fifty-two Deerville in Amherst, Connecticut. I think it's Gary Michael.
It's a lot of stuff.
Uh, Gary Michael. I reside at fifty-two Deerville in Amherst, Connecticut. I'm also the owner, part owner with Bob Kweesin, Dolan Plaza, Grand One, Grand Two, Shell Gas Station, and the home on, uh, three Family and two twenty-five Greenwood Avenue. We were the first, if you want to call it barometer, first project, Grand One, when Beth Kavagga and Steve Palmer were doing the research with Plan A Metrics. And I think the town spent close to a quarter of a million dollars come forward with Bethel Forward. And I echo Bob's sentiments, it should be Bethel Forward, not Bethel backwards. We are actually a situation that we saw where online was killing downtown residents as far as commercial empty spaces. The Dolan Plaza, two thousand and three, had six empty spots. I don't know if you remember that. We had to repurpose that building because people were not coming to downtown. We had to create restaurants, Cortenos, Tom's, Big Cheese's. We had to get hardware store. We had to adapt to the current conditions that existed. Grand One, when we finished it, Beth and Steve came down. We had twenty-six humans, ready for this? Twenty were from downtown Bethel people, empty nesters. They wanted to stay in Bethel. Their children weren't Bethel. They wanted to go to the doctors. They wanted to visit the hospital, friends. They wanted to stay in downtown Bethel. So we didn't bring in outsiders to Bethel. Bethel people couldn't afford to keep their homes unfortunately, so they decided to sell it and take down rents. Situation with, um, you already believe cut TOB by a third with regards to density. One from thirty units, an acre to down to twenty. So you're in cutting by one third. And to be very honest with you, I'm a little outraged looking at this act. You took our two buildings, fifty-two units out of TOB, and we backed right up to the transit station. That's your train station right there. So we, we can get to the train station in less than a minute. You took it out. Well, what's the rationale behind that? Doesn't make any sense. Now you're giving me a non-conforming property that I'm going to have problems in the future with. Where I have the serious investments as far as mortgages and updates and keeping the property. Now I got a non-conforming property? I don't think that's right. I definitely think you should change that line, keep it straight, keep our two buildings in the T O D district. If anything, you should look at expanding the T O D district and try to keep development so that the grand is continues to grow. The major reason why I invested in downtown Bethel is I like, it's a great, well, essential, knowing good town. I'd like to see it stay that way. You're going to wind up being like Danbury Main Street where they have vacant storefronts. Nobody's going down there and your residents don't use it. You have to create an incentive to keep people to come to the mercy of downtown. The ice cream shop, the pie, pizza cup, something along those names. And speaking of grants, how much money? They're sitting right now today, a four point five million dollar grant. It's tied to the TOD, the fixed Diamond Avenue and Greenwood Avenue. Where is, why isn't it started? Because you people want to eliminate the transit distance. There's a grant, if you're looking at me like it doesn't exist. It does. It does exist. So take advantage of the money that's coming from this city. Please consider keeping the TOB the way it is. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. I have Rob Stoll.
Stoll. Rob Stoll, fifteen Main Street. Lived in, uh, the Grand Street for since nineteen eighty-four. Uh, my neighbor happens to be the grant, wanting to. Uh, I probably may recall, he's speaking not against the grant as, as the building, but the scope. We've had our differences. However, the grant has turned into a wonderful name for us to bring. Uh, and I'm going to speak anecdotally for you, but I know that at least for people who walk from the train station or from their house at the grant to the train station every morning, that is the five thirty train. Uh, I know that because I'm not walking my dogs on fire for work and to be honest with you. Anyway, long story short, I think it would be a huge mistake for you guys to cut this back. I also think it's a huge mistake that my house will no longer be in TOD if this goes on. Uh, so anyway, that's, that's my major thing. What I would like for you guys to reference would be both letters from Bethel's Economic Development Commission. One date in March fourteen, one date, it's a hundred problems. I haven't had a chance to read these. These kids texting with cakes from our own people here in Bethel, our own economic development committee. Why this is bad. Unparted. Please refer. Finally, I'm just going to end with a small complaint, which I've already spoken about. When I got home from work today, I went on the website, which people get the actual team, they just can see if there's been any changes. And you probably already know this, but if you go to section five eleven, transit oriented, they say refers to the ethics day. So you go to the ethics day and what you see are free, why are you? So from a resident's perspective, how do you expect my colleagues here to come and intelligently discuss anything having to do with TOD? But they can't even.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, it's Sudek.
Good evening. I'm Nancy Sudek, Two Ridge Dale Road. I just have some basic questions and I'm hoping somebody can answer. First one is, can somebody explain what the significance of the overlay zone is? I know it's important and I know I never really understood what that meant. But if somebody could explain that, I think that might help lead in some others as well. And this regards nine eleven Diamond Avenue. I'm, I'm wondering how exactly is that zone today? I know it had been industrial and then I know somebody bought it, then I think that maybe it went to residential. But I'm not even sure what that is. If somebody could explain that and what's the status of that property today? And who owns it? Who pays taxes? And those are my questions. Thank you.
I have Jamie Lockwood.
Hello, I'm Jamie Lockwood, William Lockwood Avenue. Um, so I very well could have missed this, but from a few people's comments, it sounds like I haven't. But I've yet to hear the reason for shrinking the TOD. I understand there's a public outcry to do anything to help stop overdevelopment. But from my understanding, shrinking the TOD would inevitably prevent something like a nightmare on Ashland. And so I'm still on loss what shrinking the TOD would do. And as both a resident and as a business owner that is currently in the TOD and is slated to not be in the TOD, I have concerns. I own the media with my husband. Um, I would venture to bet that any business downtown wants more business and not less business. And I think people are always weighing where to spend their hard earned money, but right now it feels like it's happening even more so. You have skyrocketing health insurance prices, increased ever sores, you name it. And there's only so much that business owners can ask and expect of our neighbors. But where I feel there's a real opportunity is tourism. We have a very cute downtown full of independent shops and cafes and restaurants. And people like to drive and park and walk or take the train and walk for a day trip when they're, and when they're doing that, they're spending money and they're not overpopulating our schools. And they're likely not burdening our first responders. They're just here to support our businesses. And when you make it harder and less desirable to get to the west side of town, the businesses suffer. And for those thinking, well, it's not the town's job to make sure your business survives. That's capitalism, baby. I get that. But our business, our businesses employ your kids and your neighbors. And we donate to every team and nonprofit and organization that asks. And to those that don't, let's not forget how Augie stepped up during the pandemic to give out food. Everyone was floored by his generosity and now we're going to wash our hands of glass out of town. As a business owner and as a resident, I am begging you to do more, not less, to help keep the clean and beautiful businesses around.
Thank you. Eta Jack. Correct? Yeah. No. Diane? What street? Uh, one eleven Old Hollywood Road. Sure, one, one nineteen, I'm sorry. Just let's see. Alright, uh, we'll call her again. Uh, Carol Singleton. Two seventy-three Diamond Avenue. Brad Colts on Fairchild Drive. Brad Fallow.
Brad Colts, one Fairchild Drive. Um, so, uh, we've lost about thirteen businesses, uh, along the TOB area adjacent to it in the last year and a half to two years. So, uh, all of this cheerleading about the TOD is helping our businesses. Kind of makes a little hollow. Now, um, on the very back page, you'll see, I documented with this other gentleman. Um, when you try to read the current regulations, when the zoning regulations are updated, generally, uh, the TOD was left out. So you can go online, you can download our, our zoning. There's references to it, but there's actually no TODers online. Now, I do have the two thousand and twenty-two version of that, that Mr. Kavagga was kind enough to give me back in twenty twenty-two. So I do have that, um, if you guys need it, I've got it. Um, but at any rate, uh, it's very difficult for us, something in the public, to understand what you folks are following or consider as something that's important. So that's, that is a concern. You'll see on the inside pages of that, I've got, uh, six of the maps that have represented proposals and implementations and new proposals to the TOD. I do have a question, I don't necessarily look for answers today, but one of the things that I was in the meeting with you folks uh, came up with the idea to have this here. Oh, I don't know, I understand you're crazy business, so I'm trying to understand something. Uh, we were looking at the map that Mr. Swenson had provided and there was great discussion about, um, the lack of the ability to get the crossing across the train tracks. I mean, the menu, the west side, and I see the west side, I see the area. What was also discussed was pulling back just a little bit from the depth of this thing, so that it didn't swallow where it part of. And the new map, um, right there, right on through the, uh, looks to my eye, I like to pencil back to the substrate. So if we're looking to minimize the impact downtown developments, we don't have any more of this thing that connects, uh, Greenwood and School Street. You've got to, I think, take a look and contribute that map just a little bit more. Um, I'd like to also point out that, um, without much effort, uh, there are five hundred and forty-four Bethel resident signatures already to actually eliminating the TOD. Uh, I think that speaks of a very strong interest in getting this under control. And I do think that what you're looking to do with, uh, use the map is an excellent way to kind of kick the sting out of what we're afraid is going to continue to happen, uh, but still provide something, um, for, you know, controlled development necessary. So, um, I, I do think you're trying to find an excellent balance. I just think it needs a little tweaking. Suggest going back to some of the things we discussed during the meeting, which is trimming it back away from Greenwood and making sure that none of us going across the train tracks. Um, those are, those are my primary, uh, suggestions. I will point out that obviously parking is a problem and the TOD encourages reduced parking. Uh, the, the plan according to the TOD, uh, for, uh, going over English Apostrophe, it was going to take ninety-six existing parking spaces. And under TOD regulations, reduce it down to seven and two. I'm sure you all remember that. Um, that speaks volumes to the impact that the TOD has on the health of the downtown, parking in downtown, and pressure on businesses to get people who are going And the pressure on businesses to get people who are going to drive, who are not going to take the train, walk downtown. And go shopping at, you know, Alice's place or Patty's place or any of the other ones. That's just not going to happen in good drive. If they do that, they got the parks on. So I would encourage supporting the downtown commercial area by reducing the footprint. Thank you.
Thank you, brother. Tim Beal.
Beal, 63 Grass and Plain Street. Um, I lived in Bethel 42 years ago when I bought my antique salt box, uh, Grass and Plain, probably the second oldest housing in Bethel. And I also have a master's degree in urban planning. I've got 33 years of experience in the development field. The housing development manager for the city of Stanford for 12 years. And then for 21 years, I was their community development director. I was involved in all of their inclusionary zoning affordable houses development. I support the reduction in size of the TOD. My main concern is that the areas around train stations, corrupt this statement. Are sensitive historically. They have a lot of historic buildings that need to be protected. Grand Street was being protected. Farnham Hill, High Street, all of these areas. And so thankfully, if you've taken those out of, uh, the TOD. The other thing too is, uh, the. The TOD should be no more than a half mile. And one reason I say this is David Coris, I don't know if any of you recognize that name. There was a statewide TOD conference just in this frame. I was the only one from Bethel there. But David Coris, who is the head of the municipal development authority, he's the number one guy in charge of the TOD. He criticized towns that went beyond the half mile for their TOD jurisdiction. He also said that he would, his authority would not finance any project that was beyond the half mile. So yes, there's a lot of money up at the state. But if you go beyond a half mile, you've gone off a cliff financially. For my 33 years working with the city of Stanford, I took the train. Every day from Bethel. And. I drove my car from Grass and Plain. To the old train station, but it's a broken cemetery. It actually wasn't Metro North, it was Conrail at that time. And then when it was moved up. The line on Grand Street, there's no way out, it's going to be parking. I mean, as it is, I had to get up at five o'clock in the morning every day to get down to Stanford by eight to five. So. I'm not going to have a stroll to get on a train. I'm going to be running to get the next train as quickly as I can. I told you about the, that, so I support the, the TOD at the half mile level. And I support what you have here, except you're going beyond the, the half mile area when you go turn the corner. At Viper. When you go on Greenwood Avenue, head up. You're going beyond that half mile zone, so I suggest you pick that up. And again. Everything, um, west of the train tracks should not be in the TOD. That is not walkable within a half mile. You don't, if, if people land wings, that would be fun. But you can't get across those tracks without a bridge. And until that bridge is there, the TOD should not include those properties. That's it. Thank you.
Penny Carroll. Uh, this is Beth. Um, my name is Beth Agnew, but before I give you anything else, Billy, I want you to know. That we didn't spend $250,000 for the town's fund on the plan. We did get money from the state and I think it was close to $20,000. No, I knew that was going to be your question on the second round. Billy, spend that money? Anyways, okay, my name is Beth Agnew, blah, blah, blah. Um, this is an opportunity for me because I live here. I'm a citizen here like everybody else. It's an opportunity for me to tell you a little bit about myself. Um, most of you know me as the former town planner here in town. I'm a third generational native. My children were raised here. And I'm one of the few grandparents within the town that have the grandchildren being raised here also. Outside of my duties with the town of Bethel that went on for 24 years. I went through the land use commissions for 15. I also have been involved with the church, the churches and a lot. I don't want to get into my civic stuff, that's me, that's personal. Um, I think it's very important that you know that information. So you have a little better idea of my career and where I've come from over the last 24 years. Um, I also would like to take a moment before I get into what I wanted to discuss. To say that I appreciate the conduct of the general public here this evening. Versus what happened at the last planning and zoning hearing that I was listening to. Um, I feel that this commission, you have to remember, as me, I am a human being. I've lived in this town my whole life. I am not going anywhere. They are all human beings who are doing what they're doing on a volunteer basis, not because of financial gain. Or anything along those lines. They are here because they love the town also. I'm getting off my sofas. And they deserve your respect in a public hearing. Okay. It's important to remember the TOD plan is a visionary plan, not just for 10 years, but for 20, maybe 30. The TOD regs were implemented six years ago and changes have been made by the commission. Number one, four story buildings are not allowed. Number two, density went from 30 units to 20 units. Tonight, I want to remind the commission of data resources that they have been providing to them over the years. That should be considered in making their decision. And the best way to do it is, I'm trying to do it from a public perspective. And questions that have been raised over the years regarding TOD. One is. People have said, we don't have enough sewer and water. This has been reviewed by the public utilities department, starting with a sewer assessment and capacity plan done in 2009. It is being, uh, by time bound. It has been continually updated and overviewed. As the planning and zoning commission has not heard any other concerns pertaining to the sewer and water capacity within this town. Since the implementation of the TOD regs or the study. Another comment that is out there, the town TOD is the reason for all the overdevelopment in the town. I would refer you to a staff report prepared by the department back in January of 2024. Where it is stated, 66 units were built to date, 12 of which were affordable under the state statute 830G. That everybody knows what it is now. Another comment always says, traffic and parking are horrendous, walking isn't safe. Planning and zoning commission, working with the economic developing commission, the police department, a member of the police commission. And the public works director, working with a traffic planning firm. Created a traffic and mobility study. And it's providing data about improvements that should be made, conclusions on what, and is available online for you to review. I would refer you to the board of education, uh, sorry guys, I'm not used to standing in walk, I'm used to sitting in walk. So enjoy the moment, I'm very nervous. Um. Another comment is, the schools are overcrowded because of the TOD development. I would refer you to the board of education enrollment assessment report done in December of 2024 to review. I would also refer you to my reports given to the commission pertaining to the status of the TOD. And those updates were done in October 8th, 2024 and February 13th, 2024. In conclusion, the TOD is not just a bunch of lines on a map, but a very thorough studied area. And continues to be monitored during the implementation process. This is a town effort led by the planning and zoning commission, but involving many different departments, commissions and the public. The commission is, I'm sure, thankful for all the various departments' data and reports that they have. This has given the town an opportunity to implement and address overall concerns. The PNC commission should use the enclosed data available in order to make any decision pertaining to a map amendment for the TOD zone. As with any planning discussion, data is the best reference in making a decision. The data is what has been continually reviewed and reported by various departments and warrants and commissions, not perception. I wish you well in all your decisions and regards to making the above. I thank you for your time and at the next continued public hearing, I'd like to talk about positiveness of the, of the TOD. If it's available. Thank you.
I have Ace DeKline.
Thank you so much for the record. My name is Jay Klein, lawyer at Harmony Torrance Sand Bank in Tennessee. Here tonight on the half of the construction against eight, nine and 11 Diamond Avenue. Similar to what Beth mentioned in light of what happened on the other side of the country last week. Just thankful that we have the opportunity to come here and have this conversation respectfully. A peaceful way we can all, you know, state our opinions, some folks agree with me, some people disagree with me, but we all have a moment to say our piece. I'm thankful, uh, for that. Thank you for your participation and everyone who came up here and seen. I will say, you know, we are here, uh, we're not sure as the owners of nine or 11 Diamond Avenue. On this map and others, we are shown as remaining within the TOD. There's a list that was made by the applications as the new TOD, which would lead me to believe that, you know, properties that stay TOD of the zone changes approved, which we are on. Uh, but there is some confusion as to whether or not we're under consideration to be re-zoned. So we took a matter safe and saw approaching, only coming this evening and being able to speak on fine. You know, I, I will say that, you know, the way, the way that I look at the TOD tool, at least since it's applied to nine 11 Diamond. It's a really important tool, a really useful tool that I think will help make a great community of Bethel even better. As Mr. Olson mentioned at the beginning of this hearing, your zoning regulations and also state statute. Clearly say that when you're looking at a zone change, what you're really considering, the standard that you have looked to as well. Is this change consistent with our plan of conservation or is it inconsistent? That's sort of a guiding star in an, in an application of this. Um, and your regulations clearly state that, you know, a zone change must be in keeping with the POCD if it's to be approved. One of the primary themes of the POCD is that, uh, the town is to pursue responsible growth. And that pursuit of responsible growth is defined as focusing developing underutilized areas of town. I would say that nine 11 Diamond, which historically, uh, industrial uses that are really ripe. If not smack dab in the middle of the town, literally certainly in the core of downtown Bethel. Uh, certainly underutilized and could be so much more, uh, if, if given the opportunity to, to, to be met. Any new building that would be built on nine 11 Diamond or any property in the TOD for that matter. Uh, would require site plan review from all of you folks, which there could be a public hearing for that site plan under your regulations. So that the public remains in the loop, that in the know, as the, the voice continues to be heard. Uh, the TOD regs also allow for varied, I'd say, enhanced standards in terms of building design, materials, uh, facade articulation, things of that nature. Those are all tools that are built in to the TOD regulation, built in by many of those, uh, that you heard from earlier in the season. Those tools are, are thrown in the, in the trash if the TOD is removed from our property or perhaps from any other property. As nine and 11, you know, again, not clear what would happen. I didn't see it in the notice or other materials what would happen if TOD is removed from our property. I'm going to assume that the properties would revert back to the industrial zone, which is what they were in prior to TOD being applied a few short years ago. Uh, and, you know, those tools aren't available to a development, uh, in the industrial, in the industrial zone. These two properties are also categorized by the plan of conservation and development as being the downtown Bethel designation. Uh, which calls for a mix of commercial, residential uses. Many of the small shops, small shops, things of that nature that Ms. Law would mention earlier, which she spoke that really make a community, uh, unique and special. Many of those uses are not prohibited at nine 11 Diamond if they are taken out of the TOD. The industrial zone does not allow, uh, many retail stores, doesn't allow personal service stores, doesn't allow sit down restaurants. Those uses would be prohibited from occurring on this centrally located property. And residential uses would be, would be prohibited, uh, traditional residential uses would, would be prohibited as well. You know, I think all those commercial operations aren't just, uh, uh, they're not just a good thing for the owner of nine 11. They're not just a good thing for those business operators. They're a good thing for the folks that live on the west side of town or any, they're important gathering places that allow for communities to, to build and enhance the connectivity between residents. And citizens, all great amenities for folks who live here or want to live here in the future. I know, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm coming up in three minutes, I'll be brief. The POCD also recognizes this property as being within the priority housing area, uh, which calls for a certainly residential intensity that would not be allowed or certainly frustrated. At the very least, if these properties were to be taken out of the TOD. Um, I will briefly mention, you know, I really, I tried a memo, uh, yesterday, evening, I'm sorry, I couldn't get it to you earlier. That raised some procedural questions in addition to the one that Jeremy mentioned earlier this evening. I, I would always say, and I saw on the screen, I walked by, that Mr. Andre's is on, um, you know, my understanding of case law, my understanding of the statutes is that. When you file a zone change application, uh, the map that you filed on the town clerk's office has to show what you are proposing. And the area to be rezoned on that map can shrink, but it cannot expand. So in other words, the list of properties to be removed, I, I know there's more than 10, but let's just say there was 10. You know, you could rezone anywhere from zero to 10 properties that are on that list. But you could not add an 11 or a 12 or a 13 on that list. It's a procedural point, but it's something I wanted to, to bring to your attention. But the big message, uh, that I would leave and ask you to consider this evening, and I think to hold great on this and continue the hearing, is that these are really good tools, really useful tools. I ask that you not throw them out and put them to, to, to good use. So, uh, thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Penny Kessler?
Penny Kessler, 22 Spring Hill Lane. Um, having sat on that side of the table. I want to say thank you to all of you. I was also at the last meeting last Tuesday. Thank you to everybody here, much more respectful, well done, well done. So my husband opened his dental office in Bethel, Arnoldus Street in 1979. So we've been a part of Bethel, although we lived in Danbury for a while, you know, everybody makes mistakes. We've been a part of Bethel for 46 years. And we watched, really with delight, the growth of businesses throughout the downtown area. We watched empty storefronts, fronts become filled. And then sometimes go out of business and then get refilled. We watched as there were a lot of apartments and a lot of houses available to know, my goodness, we can't afford it. Because there's just not enough housing in the town. Personally, I am delighted when I drive through town and I see cars parked on Grandlet Avenue. I am absolutely delighted when I cannot park in Broken Cemetery's parking lot. Because that means that there are people downtown in the businesses, in the restaurants. And I know that some business owners are really, really struggling with that. That is because, one of the things that I've also been urging changing since I sat on planning and zoning. Is changing the regulations for developers of multi-use and multifamily developments. The regulations for parking, and I know developers don't make money. The regulations for parking, and I know developers don't make money on parking spaces, but there are not enough parking spaces in these multi-use, multifamily developments. Trying to get that through, I guess, on the commission didn't work. Something, I don't know how many people went through the labyrinth of finding information about tonight. I did, and the first thing that I found was this map. I know Bethel pretty decently, the downtown area, and I'm there a lot. I don't know where anything is. I identify this stuff. I still don't know where anything is. This is an awful map. But what I also found were letters from the Economic Development Commission, which created the POCD and the TOD and all of the other zones in the area to build businesses in Bethel. And I'm not going to read all six pages that NPD sent, that's Chair of the Commission, but I do want to highlight this. Here's what's happened since we've had a TOD. Higher property values and tax revenue. Over 200, almost $250,000, or more, $250,000 from the TOD zone. That is remarkable since the TOD went into effect. What's happened in transportation? And I know we've heard about, yeah, nobody really cares about transportation, that's ridiculous, you know, I want to hear about people walking with new bicycles. But the reality is, we have more public parking signage, we have school street sidewalks, we have upgraded lighting, there are downtown bus shelters, there are, we have funding to complete a comprehensive mobility and parking plan that goes along with the Bethel Forward Plan. There were grants, there's bus transit advocacy. I had someone within my congregation, lived all over Danbury, came to Bethel because that's where his banking was. The guy could not walk, but he took the bus. And I would see him at the bus stop on Grassley Plain Street in front of where, I'm really taking myself, finest, if you remember that one. Train access planning, bicycle infrastructure, infrastructure funding, there is so much that the TOD has done. I suggest that everybody in this room go into that labyrinth of all of the comments and all of the documents, read what the Economic Development Commission has written to all of you. And finally, and I forgive me, I don't remember who said it, but I just kind of heard them at the very beginning, I am all about moving Bethel forward. I do not want to go back to a time when there were multiple businesses, stores, empty. I don't want to go back there. I want to keep moving forward, understanding that we have a lot of challenges in this town. Reducing the TOD is not going to fix them, understand, it's going to make them worse. So thank you again, I really appreciate you being here. And I think you're going to get out of here before nine o'clock.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I just took what I asked for.
Nancy Ryan.
Nancy Ryan, 25 Walling Road. I'm going to run up Beth and say I'm fourth generation here. So one of the comments answered a lot of the questions that I've had. But I'd like to just see if there can be at some point, like, appreciate some of the stuff Penny came up with and a few other people. I too tried to go through all the documentation and everything. If there's a way that we could kind of get a summary as we're looking at this, I know, again, I would say that's a horrible map mine. I got on my phone, the GIS staff, and just started filling in all the streets so I knew where everything was. I knew which was the frame, so I could go there. But if we're looking at making changes, I think we need to really look at why. And if we're looking at what's part of the whole process of creating the TOD and all the different workshops, et cetera, I can contend all of that because I'm on a different commission than that on the same night. But putting all that information together, we came up with this plan. I'm for keeping something, I don't want it to go away completely. We need to make changes so that we can make it more compact, compact, I think is a good word. And if we're going to look at what we get out of it, are we going to get more by keeping within the radiuses that a couple people mentioned, et cetera? Penny was mentioning what we've gained. And so having some kind of a summary of what has the town gained in the past nine years since the TOD was put in place? There, I know there've been a bunch of meetings that you've had where people have given input, et cetera. You can have some kind of a summary. And then what would we possibly potentially lose by shrinking? Could we, or would we gain something more by making it a little more compact, as I said? Couple of the things that I found interesting with the workshops that we did with the Bethel Forward was there was a lot of excitement from people of different ages in making our whole downtown area livable in a way that you could walk where you needed to go, you didn't have to drive everywhere. And that whole concept is very exciting, yes. I still see people who go to Carol Luce's and then just drive down to the library, they don't walk, people don't walk. Trying to create some sort of a walkable downtown, I think it's going to be a little more effort on our part to make it, not everybody can drive, not everybody can walk. You need to go from one side to the other. What kind of transportation can we provide for people? I don't know, is it buses that we have in Zizzi right now? We can get someplace real quick. And so, yes, I think parking is a issue. I think that parking continues to be a issue, really need to look at how are we going to, especially when we have some potential developments within the area, within the existing area, within the wrong area. So that we have enough parking in the downtown area so people can do what they need to do, go to the municipal center, go to the library, go shopping, sit and have a coffee with a friend, et cetera, without having to drive from one place to the other. Because that is part of your parking problem. So if you do drive from one side of downtown to the other, you don't always find, you have parking near, but you don't always have there, there's not a lot of parking in Bethel spread out here yet. So thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I invite that everybody's being more respectful tonight. Hope that continues into the future, and we get some answers to different questions as we pull this. Thank you.
EJ Liberty?
A great street. I have to admit to be somewhat new for the thing. In the TOD booklet, there is a vision statement on the very first page. And it talks about adopting regulatory procedural changes to incentivize redevelopment by allowing high densities of housing. You've also put in place architectural review, increase ratio of affordability goods, all good, focusing on restoration of existing star buildings, incorporating, enhancing the community character while implementing new complementary, multi-level, mixed use, cultural, social opportunities, and making infrastructure improvements, roadside walks, street skates, downtown park, providing learning assistance and financial support. So basically, we get mixed use, increased density of infrastructure purpose. In the plan, in this vision plan, there are four new unbrave crossovers over the railroad tracks. Two are vehicular and two are pedestrian. One of the vehicular connects Diamond to Durant. The other one is down at the other end of Durant where the cell storage is. And that comes over and actually connects to the nine eleven Diamond Belt. So that development would have two extra vehicular routes, Diamond to Durant and also from the interior of nine eleven over to the end of Durant. But the TOD has turned this down. So you do not have these two extra vehicular tracks. And apparently not pedestrian crossroads is going either. So without these crossovers, I find it difficult to find that the west side of the TOD meets the general. However, however, there is much that can be done. And there's a quote in the book, "But to get there from now will depend entirely on the town's own efforts on implementing the vision to steer the course to establish priorities." In the TOD master plan, there's a section of action papers. Economic development, tax abatement, tax credit, very specific marketing ideas and other policy ideas. For the urban design section, there are seven pages of specific suggestions, including working with public utilities, shared parking, this one cracks me up, pre-negotiate with the Office of State Traffic Authority, whoever knew. But anyway, I would encourage you to research other successful strategies from other TODs. You have to see what other people have done that works. Allow higher, one of the things, allow higher building height for buildings closer to the railroad station. And the farther away you get, the lower the buildings have to be. Limiting multifamily units to one pod. If you're going to reduce the allowed parking, and if they want two cars, then you give them an extra increment on their rent. Regional planning, do something for the other towns. Shared cars, step on transport so that you can get quickly from one end of town to the other. But you've got to work on reducing cars. And I know that you do have the Mobility Parking Traffic Study, which I can tell you, when I look at it, I see a lot talking about parking, a lot talking about walkability, bikes, bike lanes, curb bulges to, you know, hold the traffic flow, but it really didn't address traffic reduction. And I think we've got to find some ways. If we're going to have successful development and a vital downtown, we've got to find some way to not flog up through what happened. You lost these two vehicular overpass in all the ways across the grounds. We've got to compensate for it some way. And then one final note, and this isn't even there totally underwritten, but I got to say it. The state statute, C 837, which is certain percent have to be 80% or 60% of the average income, doesn't do anything for people who are working minimum wage jobs for 40 hours a week. It is not helping, you know, we have a homeless population, and it's not helping those people.
Josh Schmucker?
Thank you. I'd like to thank the commissioners first of all. Got to move a lot over the years and hopefully watch it online, which I wasn't here at the last meeting, deserve a lot more respect. Thank you. Mostly you know me, I live at 245 Greenwood Avenue. My house, like Tim's, is quite old. I think you're older. Where's? Seventeen, sixteen. Only our house is here. Yeah. And as I've stated before, I mean, I have been a developer, so I've put up a building in the Clark and Oster Park. We worked on our house, also on Four Family House, et cetera. So I understand development. The issue I have with the TOD in general, critical issues for me, is that all of the master plan called for a lot of changes within the TOD. It talked about fixing traffic, fixing parking, fixing sidewalks, making walkability. And as you know, where we are, we utilize all the businesses in town all the time. We're in restaurants in town and bookstores and, you know, order bazinga, et cetera. We enjoy immensely. But I would say the walkability of this town is not good. I'm happy that Beth did the study of mobility and traffic and so forth. Thank you, it's the third time it's been done in the town of Bethel, and they all say the same thing. So over that whole period of time, despite all of the effort that's been put into it, it has not improved much of anything. So I look at numbers from the mobility, I have those numbers, average daily traffic is currently about 20,000 cars a day. That's the number we're dealing with. Yeah, the shopping center around the corner is $23,000, $1,000 cars a day. So the point made is when we did the initial study, going back to 2020, it was 14,000. So we won 14,000, these are in your report, I'm quoting reports from the town of Bethel by our DOT, just to wear my facts, okay? So we won 14,000 in 2020, just up 6,000 cars and 30%. So we sit in our, we have a front row seat to Greenwood Avenue, we're right on Greenwood Avenue, and we see traffic back all the way up through town. And you can look at the report, it was done by the town of Bethel, it's, my critical question for the TOD is if you're going to advance and keep this other side of it, I don't see the infrastructure there to take care of it. The cost to put in, frankly if I'm wrong, was approximately $4.2 million in that report to fix the traffic issue that exists now before any further development. So the real question for the commission is, is there enough infrastructure and where do the dollars come from to support this? And so I'm not anti-development, I've never been anti-development. I am for responsible development. And I applaud Mr. Michaels, he's still in the room. It's a beautiful, beautiful development, he's done a great job of it. But I go back to the commission, it's not only, it's not only building, it's managing the plan of development, call for proper sidewalks. I still would love to see them push a button in front of the plaza there so we don't get run over by cars. So my issue is one of, where is the infrastructure for the TOD? If you're going to keep this other side of it, where is the infrastructure in place to take care of it? And both of the traffic you have here, we're redlocked. I can sit on the front porch and watch it back all the way through Bethel, all the way through town, and one of the TD studies says you're going to be redlocked shortly. So if you want to keep developing it, you've done a great job. By my count, we're about 178 units built, right in the TOD, including Mr. Michaels' development. So that's within a half a mile, we put 176 units in place. The numbers are all here, they're all in your reports, so of course, it's fine that that's either proved or built. So before you do others, keep building more, excluding A 37, which you cannot control, then my suggestion to you is that the infrastructure this town has to be fixed to maintain and develop. Again, I'm not anti-development, but if you decide you're going to keep this, or even working with this, the bigger issue here in this town is where's the money going to come to fix the infrastructure in the town? Traffic specifically, walkability, traffic lights flashing, crosswalks, et cetera. I worked the library, and all I can report is people know, our parking lot, weekends, we have no parking for maintenance anymore. It's wrong. They talk about parking and availability, it's a critical issue, it's a critical issue for everybody who's here. So how's that going to be fixed? I didn't see it, tried to fix it. So thank you for your time, we loved living in Bethel, we've made it here longer than some of the others. We have 50 years here at this I-. So thank the commissioners for all the work you've done. It was nice to, thank you.
All right. Paul again, we have Cynthia Morkenell, she here? Nina Jack?
Yes, ma'am. Carol Samuelson?
Was there anyone else in the room that wanted to be added on? You want to, want to?
James, wait till I, yeah, I wasn't going to speak. I heard you all to reread the letter that I sent you and reread the one I sent about forty eight fifty Nashville as it pertains to some things that came up tonight.
Ma'am, just a quick forty eight fifty Nashville is still an issue we're reviewing. Do not reference it.
Okay. Read all the letters I sent the last few months, please.
Thank you.
Or read them. B J and I are probably the only people who wrote the side of the address to really read the master plan and reread and look at it, study it. She brought up some really important things of infrastructure on the west side of the tracks. Every time I read that plan, I would say to myself, we paid for this, especially the things that are on the west side. Thinking about putting a crossing from Diamond down to C P S, essentially. It's crazy. Thinking about extending Farley Hill, that's what you just talked about referencing. Extending Carney Hill doors and then cutting over to Durant, crossing the tracks, going through West. You know, this is crazy too. We have so many train crossings already. I can't believe that a good developer like, a good planner company like D P C would even suggest that. It baffles me. Now, one of the things that B J didn't talk about was the extension of Elgin Avenue through the Saunders property to connect to Henry Street to go farther north and cut up and come out on grassy plain right across from Timber Oak. That is in our master plan. That's never going to happen. You're going to have to go through, you know, forty two units of housing to get there now. But the idea that people would want to go through Elgin and cut through, right? That's going to do, that would do horrible things to Elgin. So these ideas were there. Now, for all the faults of the D P C plan, which then informed the P C O D, which calls for a thousand new dwelling units in downtown Bethel between twenty twenty and twenty thirty. We don't even have a space for parking if you gave each unit half a space, never mind one space. And I don't know where you put buildings and I don't want to think about it. So then we get a P C O D that is somehow we're supposed to be bound to now and it's affecting our ability to, you know, restructure the T O D. It starts with the master plan and its problems. And then it goes to the P C O D, P O C D, and then it comes to the T O D and our map. So I would just say that, keep in mind that the one thing that D P C did right was say that you needed all that infrastructure to do the things that they talked about west of the tracks. They were right about that. As crazy as their suggestions for it were, they were right, we need it. And we don't have it, we're never going to have it. So I would say, listen to the people we paid money to, the local government. They say, we need this infrastructure, we're never going to get this infrastructure. We should not do those things. Never mind it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Perry, Mr. Sakis.
Perry, you're going to have to spell your last name.
S T N, S T A, K I S. Thank you. Forgive me, I wasn't prepared on speaking tonight. But I do feel like I have the best interest here and obviously you've got the property on the square, Greenwood Avenue, more recently. Further down the street, I bring that two sixty eight. So I'm in a position where I have a property that's in the T O D and I'm in a team for, um, post, not in the T O D. So I need here some clarification. I guess the biggest thing is I'm still trying to figure out why this is all happening. So I'm trying to dumb this down and just figure out why we're having this meeting, why it's proposed to decrease. Something that comes to mind, and this is something I remember having a workshop here, having beautiful drawings like Greenwich Westport. And it was great, like, oh yeah, sign me up, my property's going to, going to make a ton of money, this is going to be great. But then I took a step back and I realized, like, I hear Bethel forward, Bethel backward. But I want the commission to really understand that sometimes forward will make you go backward. And what I'm really saying is, this is something that I've always talked about even back then, ten years ago. I was involved and I always stressed that, I remember the days my parents started the business, the mall came, it was like tumbleweed down Greenwood Avenue. I grew up in that. We lived, um, yes, downtown is much better than it is, but if you go, but not to, I'm offering a business perspective here. I think if you ask most of business scholars, how, how's business? No one's going to be like, it's great. You know, we're busting our ass and we're doing the best we can. And yes, we have more customers and we need more customers. But if you allow this mixed use development, like I've seen renderings on Diamond Avenue, I'm just like, whoa, what, what is going on here? Like, and no offense, I'm a property, I'm an investor, I've invested in this town. My kids went to this town, God willing, my grandkids are going to be living in this town. And we need to understand that if we allow, you know, let's not be naive. Developers are going to come in, they're going to put retail, services, all downtown, apartments above, and we're going to have customers, everything's going to be great. But then all of a sudden, there's more pizza shops, more drug stores, more Italian restaurants, and we're all back to where we started. And what do we gain? Traffic. So if this is the reason for this, you know, even though one of my properties is going to be affected, I'm all for it. Because I'm about what's best for the town, there's a lot of stuff. One other comment I wanted to make is, uh, something we didn't talk about is I read an article today on A I and how it's going to affect our community, our jobs, free day work week is being discussed and all that. So I think we just need to, if we're talking about Bethel forward and how that's going to affect the commercial base stores, I think that's something that I would like you guys to consider.
Perry, for the record, what's your address?
One seventy one, that's the original.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? I'm going to go to the online first. Anyone else? See anyone online? Maybe you want to see if anyone has their hand raised?
I don't, I don't see any hands raised at this time, Mr. Chairman. But I would remind those that are attending next meeting online, if you do want to offer a public comment, there is icon at the bottom of the tool bar. With the hands, if you click on that to raise your hand, that establishes a queue for those attendings to offer a public comment. I see Julie Sorcek.
All right. Julie, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Julie Sorcek, eight D B Street in Bethel. Sorry, the echo is a little strange here. I just wanted to let you know, I just emailed a letter to the commission tonight. And I would like to just make sure that you receive that letter and that it will be as recorded as part of the record. Okay, thank you. I'm not going to, I don't want to take up any more time, but I did submit a letter today along with a copy of a letter from November seventeenth of twenty twenty two that I was, would like the commission to, if they have, you know, as their deliberations on this, to take their time reading it. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Julie. Anybody else online?
I'm not seeing any other hands raised at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Sood, you want to add one?
Yeah, just, just a follow up.
Portos, if you're recording.
Oh, that's right. Okay, so this is just a follow up question after Mr. Gary Michael's call. And he mentioned he has tenants at Grand, Grand One, and they on a regular basis go to the train station and then somebody else says he sees them at five thirty in the morning. And they actually walk to the train station from Grand One. And I'm really confused because don't they have to like fight a fence to do that? And I'm just confused as to how that would work. Because I don't think there's direct access there, but I might be wrong.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, that's not one of them.
No, no.
Okay. That's what I said.
Thank you. Yes. Come on, here, you'll start.
Please don't give up on the idea of getting your own crossings. Yeah, the answer might be known today, but the answer from town should be to double down. And all of our representatives and senators and town officials bothering the state until they say yes. I guarantee if the west side of the tracks is removed from the T O D, the answer will always be no. There's no question, it's a chicken and the egg problem that was foreseen in two thousand sixteen. Personally, in two thousand sixteen, I advocated pedestrian crossings at the railroad station. I think me and Bethel know how to handle pedestrian crosses across those tracks as we've done for a hundred years on Greenwood Avenue and South. But the state, I said no to that, I understand. Please don't give up on that.
Thank you.
It will happen if we bother them.
The state has enough money.
Yes. Anybody else, anybody else have any class marks? I'll turn it over to the commission for any wish comments before we close out. Start our W.
No, this time.
I'll just say, uh, thank you for everybody's comments tonight. I think there's a lot of things for us to review here as well, look forward to work on that and taking other different comments that you've heard.
I suppose we can continue this.
Yeah, this is going to be, this is going to be continued for sure.
So I would want to make the original motion. The point of it was to get what we have here today, get a lot of opinions, get some feel good legal advice, some new things, right? And that's the main reason for it. We don't have correct information and all of the information, we cannot make good adjustments here. Thank everyone for coming.
Bob, you on there still? So I got it. He's muted, uh, he muted him before. He probably doesn't know he's muted. Oh.
Can you hear us, Bob?
Okay. Bob's on, Bob's on. I would also just echo over and say, it's quick to say thank you everyone for coming. Just keep an eye out for the public notices for when this is continued, this time, we don't have a date in mind. And with that, I'll make a motion to close, very continuous hearing, do a date.
You need to get a date.
I need to set a date?
Yes. You need to get a date. You need to get a date, do the, do another date, do another date. Set a date tonight.
What's the second meeting in October? All right, so I make motion to continue this to the October twenty eighth, second. All favor? All right. And I make motion to close, please, second, all favor, bye. All right, everyone, have a good night.